Morning Commissioners and thank you for having me out this morning. My name is Justin Doling and I'm with the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources. The Division of Wildlife Resources here in the county owns and manages about sixteen thousand eight hundred acres. And we'd like to present you with a payment in lieu of taxes in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. And then just some background, the resources used to generate this check come from the sale of hunting and fishing licenses, not only in the county but throughout the state. And while I'm here, if I just want to reaffirm our commitment to help the county with the resource plan. We have four chapters that we have expertise in that I believe we've drafted and provided to the county. So that offer is an open invitation to have us come and help your planner or planning department work on that county resource plan.
Sean, are we still working on that?
We are in process right now. Charlie Ewer is the main contact on that.
Good. And just the last thing, just wanted to make sure that wildlife is behaving itself in the county. Any problems with our wildlife?
They don't cross your ice ball.
Yeah, they don't look at the signs, do they?
Actual wildlife.
I think they're all behaving. Do we count dairy cows as wildlife?
We can count those today.
Because they don't always do it. But we appreciate it. We know that it's an important part of our economy, hunting and fishing and a lot that goes along, the management of wildlife. And we really appreciate the opportunity that we have to work with you. We've had an awful lot of opportunities in the past, but I think with the flood of 2011 and the aftermath and trying to fix things up, I think our relationship has become stronger and stronger. And we couldn't express our thanks enough for the work that you've done to help our county improve after that situation. So thank you.
No, I agree. And I enjoy our relationship we have with the county. And please don't hesitate to contact me if something goes awry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the yearly presentation of our Goal Foundation report. And we've got the team back there, it looks like, led of course by the boss herself, Jenny Schaller. And we are grateful to have you Jenny and look forward to your report.
Thank you.
Introduce to us who you've got with you.
I have with me my past president Kevin Burns, my current president Todd Ferrario, and then my new marketing person Brian Nicholson.
Good.
He's here for talent and support.
So you just hired Brian a little while ago. Did you forget to tell him that you had to be a county employee to work for Goal?
No.
To be the president or I guess not work.
I know. They do a lot of work. Huh Kevin and Todd? Little bit. Chasing me around.
You just don't get paid very good.
Yeah. I'm just waiting for my PowerPoint.
Well, congratulations Brian. It's good to have you onboard. Good to see you.
I'm never very good at controlling the PowerPoint here. But thank you Commissioners for having me. I'm excited to give a yearly report of our 2015 activities of the Goal Foundation. We were able to accomplish a lot this year. And I'd just like to remind everybody that our mission is to inspire the greater Ogden community and its visitors to get out and live by participating, volunteering, and spectating at recreational events, programs, and activities. So I'm going to now recap what we did in 2015 for our mission. Our vision is a greater Ogden community that thrives economically and is healthier in mind, body, and spirit. And we'd like to say the message that we are more than a marathon. The marathon is our singular, our main kind of gala, I call it, but we try to do a lot more in our program than just the marathon. We give world-class event support. As everybody knows, we were founded after the 2002 Winter Olympics. And we have volunteers that like to do Olympic-level volunteering in outdoor activities. We recruit, reward, retain volunteers. That's part of our yearly plan. We're experienced in planning and production support. We give advertising and marketing design support to some of the events that come into Weber County. And then we also in some instances give sponsorship support to the events. Community outreach, we have our year-long Young Runners Program. That's a twelve-month program that goes into the schools in the after-school programs, YMCA and Boys and Girls Clubs. We started a shoe give-back program two years ago. And this year with the help of Ramp, thank you to the Ramp Grant, we did a golf fitness trail that is on part of the marathon course. And we'll utilize that, it will be for the community, but also we'll utilize that in our Young Runner programs to get families out for healthy breakfast and movement. And then we also now are in our third year of youth summer camps where we do mountain biking, pickleball, and climbing. This year, the Ogden Marathon hosted nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five runners. All of the events that we produced and supported, we hosted seventeen thousand athletes. Seventeen hundred volunteers gave almost eleven thousand hours to produce the Ogden Marathon. And in all of the events that we supported, twenty-six hundred volunteers gave approximately almost seventeen thousand hours of volunteerism. The Ogden Marathon economic impact is between one point seven and two point two million dollars to the area. The difference in the gap there is out of state versus in-state or local runners. All of the events that we supported and produced had a three point three million economic impact. As I said earlier, with the help of Ramp, Intermountain Healthcare, Ogden City, we collaborated and installed a nine-station fitness court on the trail surrounding Big D Park in Ogden. I think most of you were there at our ribbon cutting. It was a really great community event. There's some pictures of it. Our youth program, seventy-two Young Runner Program site visits, twelve schools with about six hundred students. We had a hundred and thirty youth enrolled in our summer camps and we gifted two hundred and sixty pairs of shoes. That is in our elementary program. We also extended that to the high schools this year where we gave high-end, we collaborated with Striders and gave high-end shoe certificates for those track hopefuls for high school kids that maybe couldn't afford the shoes that they need. There's some of our Young Runner Youth Camp pictures. In the marathon. Are you, where are you?
Such a liar.
That is such a funny story because the guy on the very end corner, we have this in our office. And literally the guy walked in, he goes, "That's me." He's one of our volunteers and it was him. I'm like, "It is you." We produced the Striders Winter Race Circuit. We'll be in our second year of that this year. We purchased it from Striders. And then the Ogden Marathon, we added a mare's walk this year. So we have the marathon, half marathon, relay, five K, kids K, and Friday night we have a mare's walk. And we supported the National Fat Bike Championships, the Cannondale Sales Event, Tour of Utah, USA Cycling Master Championships, Exterra USA Championships, and Exterra USA Trail Championships in 2015. Our race has grown from about three thousand athletes in 2006 to the almost ten thousand in 2015. The media and PR impact of the marathon, our TV coverage was a hundred and six thousand dollar value with almost six hundred thousand impressions. And our print circulation, and I did ask Brian, I'm like, "Is that forty-nine million circulation?" But that's from social media bloggers. And we were recognized on shape.com last year as one of the top marathons in the nation. And a lot of those impressions came from the shape.com recognition that we received. And our annual economic impact for all of the events, again, three point five million, seventeen thousand athletes hosted, twenty-six hundred volunteers giving almost seventeen thousand hours. And that's about a three hundred ninety-three thousand value if you look at the Utah Commission on Service of Volunteerism. Sarah Tolliver's team, we support them when they go out to recruit some of these events that come. They say they have a Goal Foundation in their back pocket that's a volunteer machine. So we help with the recruitment of the events that come into town. And we're happy to do it. And we thank you so much for your support that you've given us. And Carrie for serving on our board, thank you.
So, go ahead. So I want to talk about this athlete thing. So I've never been considered an athlete in my entire life. But I ran in the marathon last year. So am I an athlete now?
Yes.
Really?
Well, what did you run in?
I ran in the marathon. I ran in the relay.
Good.
So am I one of those athletes you talk about?
You are. You are one of those.
So I can put on everything, I can put that under my name, County Commissioner slash athlete.
We'd like you to say Ogden Marathon athlete.
Ogden Marathon athlete. Wow. I didn't realize that I am an athlete. Nobody has ever called me an athlete, ever. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you noticed, but you just called yourself an athlete. I don't know if that counts for someone else calling you an athlete.
She called me that.
You are one of those numbers.
She said, "These athletes that run in it." And I ran in it, kinda.
I'm going to go ahead and verify this for Commissioner Bell. Because I will admit, there was a time when I was considered an athlete. I mean, that's hard to believe, but it's true. But it hasn't been for a very, very long time, if you know what I mean. But Commissioner Bell trained for this thing.
That's good.
And trained hard for a year, probably. And I never thought I'd admit this, but there was a point as we were on different relay teams and trying to run together. And he literally, and I say this not figuratively, but literally, ran a couple of circles around me. I mean, he was having fun and he ran circles around me. And I told him he was a jerk for doing it, but he still.
Are you doing it again?
Still did it.
That's the true test of an athlete.
We're signed up for it, so I think we're going to do it again.
That's good. Did you get wet?
We got very wet. Very, very wet. No, it was a great thing, so.
One of our sponsors is providing ten thousand heat sheets, so it's sure not to rain, I hope. Overprepared.
We all have our way of supporting where we can and how we can. And we hope that it helps. We want the community to know that we support this organization.
Thank you.
It's a great organization. I will admit, it's one that I think a lot of people envy. Because they, I think the biggest thing is you have been able to leverage volunteers in a way that is just absolutely unparalleled. Not just in, you know, among your peers in this type of thing, but I think with any volunteer organization, it is just absolutely amazing to see that type of stuff happen. And I think that has opened so many doors and frankly given our community a competitive advantage. As we go out and try to take care, you know, try to bring in business and opportunity to our community. And so I, you know, obviously, I know that you're always looking for opportunities to do better. But from our perspective, it's wonderful to see the positive progress that has been made. This is one of those things Commissioners, by virtue of our, of the county's contribution to the Goal Foundation every year, they have the opportunity, responsibility both to come and report to us. And so if there are any questions that you have regarding their mission or what they're doing, this is a good time to ask those. As you know, I've been serving on their board and as a kind of an ex officio member, I show up when I can and I kind of get enough to feel comfortable with where they're going. But this is a good opportunity for you as well to ask those questions if you have any.
The only question I have is, do you need a different board member?
I'm very happy with Commissioner Gibson, actually. Thank you.
No, I just, I'm very appreciative of the quality of staff that you have and the job that you do and the vision you've outlined. And it really does bring a tremendous value to our community as a whole. Not just the economic numbers are extremely important, but providing that service to the community strengthens us as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bell has brought this up several times, but as we look at these economic opportunities with businesses wanting to move into our area and bring jobs and opportunity, we see more and more that they're looking for quality of life opportunities. And this is one of those things that I think just makes all the difference in that. So that's something that we've talked about frequently. Anyway, please report back of our gratitude and thanks for all that you're doing to your board and tell them thank you.
And thank you for your support. We really do appreciate it. It takes a lot of collaboration between the county, city, sheriff, police, fire. It's quite a big event, so thank you so much.
Great, sounds good. Okay. Now, the only thing is that you really should stay for the rest of the whole meeting. You don't have to, you can stay if you'd like. All right, we'll move on then to our consent items. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of five hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Request for approval of warrants number four zero 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 through four zero 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 eight zero in the amount of five hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Request for approval, no, I read that wrong number, one hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Request for approval of minutes for the meeting held on January fifth of 2015. Request for approval of change order number ten for Geneva Rock projects on the Summit Pass and Spring Park roadway and utility project. I believe that's products, not projects. That really matters all that much. So Commissioners, those are the consent items. Any questions or comments on those consent items?
So I've noticed then our PO, is this our new format for? It's a draft new format, yeah. So our warrants are different, our warrants? Is this how our warrants are going to look also? No, the draft, the warrant report will change. Okay, no, that's the only question I have.
Ricky, anything you'd like to give us as far as a rundown?
You bet. And before I go over the numbers, I'll mention with the old system, when I went to change the format from what it had been for years to the current format, it took about three weeks and involved IT time. It involved downloads and work from the accounts payable department and then work from me. I worked on the report this morning. It involved zero IT time, zero AP time. It took me about thirty minutes. And I had not even started to try and figure out how to do it. So one benefit of the new system is it's very flexible and user-friendly. For the purchase orders, we had one hundred sixty-eight POs for about half a million dollars. Thirty-one percent of that amount, or a hundred seventy-one thousand dollars, was for IT. That was primarily software maintenance at the beginning of the new year. Twenty-seven percent, or one hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, was for the transportation. And that was primarily maintenance and equipment and fuel. Fifteen percent, or eighty-one thousand, went to the golden spike and primarily again for supplies. And thirteen percent, or seventy-one thousand, was for concession supplies. For the checks, there were eighty-one checks written this week for a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars. Seventeen percent of that amount, or twenty-eight thousand, was for the jail. And that went primarily to service fees, utilities, and inmate clothing. Fourteen percent, or twenty-three thousand dollars, was for the library, and that was for books and materials. Twelve percent, or nineteen thousand dollars, went to the surveyor for equipment. Ten percent, or fifteen thousand dollars, was for the treasurer's trust fund, a payroll clearing account. And eight percent, or thirteen thousand dollars, was for the economic development organization. And that was association dues for the year.
We do have quite a few members of the public here today. And so we'll just say by way of information that we receive these warrants and checks early on from, at the commission level. We have a chance to review them. Just recently, we have started to have a more thorough explanation and rundown in our commission meetings since we started broadcasting our meetings so that people can see a little bit more of what's actually going on. But all of this information is public and available to look at at any time. But it's also nice to hear a brief rundown from our clerk auditor as he puts these together for us. Anyway, it's been a better and I think more open process that allows people to understand what's going on. One of the challenges that we continually face from a county level is we have people ask us all the time, "Well, you're a county commissioner? What does the county do?" And I think as we discuss some of these responsibilities that we have as a county, it helps people to understand some of the vital, important things that the county does accomplish and do on a daily basis. So we appreciate that Ricky. And those are our consent items. Is there any other question or comment from the?
Quick question for Ricky. Through our new web design, we are looking at getting our warrants and POs online quicker. I know that our accounting system, we were waiting to come online. We have a kind of a timeframe, you think, when we can start getting our POs and our warrants online?
And by online, you mean electronic approval? And yes, that's already happening. And we're still tweaking the limits and the rules for transferring and the approval process. So you will soon be receiving email notifications for approvals. And we're just working through that. And it's our second week and it's going well, but we're just digging through.
We've had some requests to gain access as quickly as we can from the public to these lists that eventually do show up in our archives. And we're trying to get that information accessible a little quicker. And I know we're in the process of doing that. And that's what you're referencing, that we're getting quicker and quicker.
Currently, we upload to the state transparency website on a quarterly basis, all of our transactions. So if anyone wants to know who we've paid checks to by name, by category, by department, by amount, including salaries, that's all available at transparent.utah.gov. And that site is current usually within just a matter of a couple of days after we upload it. I used to go to a site called Utah's Right. And while that site is helpful, its information is generally a year or so old and doesn't break it out. And it's somewhat confusing. It'll lump certain things together. But the transparent.utah.gov is an excellent site and pretty easy to use. And you can go in and look anywhere you want. It's really helpful.
Again, that was a focus as we started last year to upgrade our transparency and to make sure that information released in a timely manner. I hope the public feels comfortable that we've met that goal and met that promise as far as some of this information and our meetings and other things.
If not, they can let me know and we'll make it better.
Well, and the fact is, we can't force them to use it, right? I mean, we're putting, we're doing so much more, I think, and making good steps. Sometimes we get a little discouraged because we only see a few people watching our YouTube channel. I don't know how we tell how many people go back in and watch it. That's okay. I mean, the important thing is that we're making it available. We're making it possible for the public to participate if they so choose. And we'll continue to look for those opportunities. And then the public will be able to access it if and when they feel it's necessary.
And I think it's become timely. And that was the biggest issue, was the timeliness of it. And so I believe that, you know, if you go through, read the agenda, then within a day or so, you'll have that information once it's been approved. And you'll be able to, as a citizen, to be able to review it and drill down in a little bit. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments on our consent items? Okay, motion?
We adopt our consent items as read.
I'll second it.
Motion is second then to adopt those consent items. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, thank you. Before we go to our action items, I wanted to do one more item, which is not on the agenda, but because it's not an action item, that's why we'll do it now. I wanted to call up Sean Wilkinson, who as you know, recently has been promoted as one of our three chief department heads, who runs the Department of Community, or excuse me, of Community and Economic Development. And is doing a great job for us. With that change in assignment for him, he had to replace himself as the planning director. And as you know, planning. Exactly. Did he pick his clone or what?
That was the number one priority.
So as you know, planning is a very, very important item that we deal with. We have an awful lot of land mass in the county that is still unincorporated. And a lot of that is very, very key to our quality of life. You know, all the way from our ski resorts and recreation in the Ogden Valley to our agriculture in the western part of the county. A very, very important thing for what we're trying to do as we move forward. And so this was not a decision, I don't think that any of us felt like we could take lightly, that the planning director is one that's very, very important. And so Sean would like the opportunity to introduce the new planning director today. So Sean?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you. This is Rick Grover. Rick is currently with Ogden City, but we were able to entice him to come to the better place. Ogden City's a great place, but Rick has been in the planning business for many years in the public sector, has a lot of good experience, was currently serving as Ogden City's Assistant Planning Director, Planning Manager over at the city. And we are really excited to have him come over. We've been meeting with him for the last few weeks, getting him up to date with our general plan process in the Ogden Valley and some of the other things that are going on. And we're just, we're thrilled to have Rick join us here. So.
Rick, anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Commissioners, it's a delight to be with you. I am very excited to come to Weber County. I've enjoyed Ogden City, don't get that wrong. I've enjoyed the redevelopment part of it, but I'm also looking forward to working with the general plan and some of the great things that you guys are doing. It's exciting. As I've been reading through the general plan, I've been excited to see the synergism and excitement there. And obviously, there's going to be controversy when you're up in the valley. I worked up in the Park City area on the general plan up in that area. And I know that there was a lot of different views and perspectives. And that's what's great about communities, is bringing those different views together and into one great whole. And that part of it very much excites me. But it's a delight to be with you. I'll be starting here on the twenty-fifth, and I look forward to that. Thank you.
We're glad to have you here. That planning department is, that's where the county's heading. And if we don't plan it now, someone else will plan it and we'll end up somewhere we don't want to be. So as we start working with that and working on planning, we're glad you're here. And you've got a great staff down there, so we appreciate you coming aboard.
So I had the opportunity to meet with Rick and be a part of the interview process. And I'm telling you, we had some great applicants, some really, really great applicants. And Rick obviously rose to the top of that pool. And just, Rick, we're way excited to have you onboard. Look forward to working with you in the future for the better of our county. Thank you.
Thanks.
You're going to like him, guys. All right, we'll move to our action items. These Kiwanis have been really, really patient on the front row for us. We told them we were going to do it towards the first, but this is an official action item today. Sometimes we do these things as resolutions and sometimes more as proclamations. But because it's a resolution today, this is an action item. So this item is a request for approval of a resolution of the County Commissioners of Weber County honoring the North Ogden Kiwanis Club for its seventy years of service to the community. So this is their seventieth anniversary, working in the North Ogden area for the good of the community. And what a blessing, I think they have been to that community for all those years and continue to be active in doing so many good things. And so we wanted to pay a little special attention to them and tell them thank you for all of their efforts and hard work on our behalf over the years. So I'm going to read this copy of this resolution. And I would like it if you guys can stand while I read this. I'd love you to come up to the microphone because again, just for the YouTube channel, I'd love for everyone to be looking at you while we read this so that they can see who you are and what you do. So come up to the microphone and then that way you can do that. All right, so this is all in legalese talk for resolution talk, okay? So whereas the North Ogden Kiwanis Club was chartered in September of nineteen forty-six when they were just over a thousand residents in North Ogden City. And whereas by nineteen forty-seven, there were thirty-seven members of the club, which met regularly in the basement of the Barker Service Station. That's kind of cool. With its charter proudly displayed. And whereas early projects of the North Ogden Kiwanis Club were directed at helping the youth, the young people in the city with infrastructure, including the planting of trees, installation of irrigation system, and building of parks with recreational facilities. Whereas the club's bylaws require that funds raised from the public must be used for community improvement with an emphasis on helping youth. Very important. And whereas the club continues to remain true to its commitment and has a history of assisting young people in a variety of ways. And whereas the club supports and assists the youth city council in their training and service. Whereas for more than forty years, the club has supported Cherry Days by cooking and serving a pancake breakfast to more than a thousand community members. And whereas the club also sponsors an Easter egg hunt for three to four hundred children every single year. The club has made generous donations to the North Shore Swimming Complex. The Northview Senior Center has sponsored a room at the George Wallen Veterans Home and is currently working to build new water fountains in the parks. Now therefore, the Board of the County Commissioners of Weber County is pleased to honor the North Ogden Kiwanis Club for seventy years of service to the community and recognize that although the club is small in size, only comprised of about thirty members, it has and will continue to have a significant impact on the quality of life in North Ogden and Weber County. This commission recognizes how fortunate our community is to have people share their resources, to have people share their resources, both financial and otherwise, to improve their community. Resolved 12th day of January 2016. Guys, it has truly been a pleasure to watch the work that you do. And, um, I, it, it, I can't get through, uh, even a few months without hearing John talk about the American Can Do Spirit Project. What a, what a great, great thing that has been over the years. And I know that you are all very involved in that. We just want to thank you for your efforts over the years. We know that sometimes these little, uh, community service opportunities are sometimes overlooked. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to do this today, because we know that, that they shouldn't be overlooked. They make a huge difference in the fabric of our community and it's people like you that make those things possible. So we want to tell you thank you for your service. Let's give them a hand. We'll let you take some time, John, and then the Commissioners, I'm sure, will have something they want to say.
Say a word. I think it's appropriate to introduce the, uh, bunch of old geezers here. We've got one geezer in training, Chris Batrick. Dave Powers is a geezer. Larry Florence, by all means, is a geezer. And Laurel Fawson, yeah, he's a geezer. And Dave Lundstrom. Uh, these are all upstanding members of our club. And, uh, we appreciate your taking the time to honor the club. We'll have a big, uh, open house on March the 15th at the Senior Center. We hope you'll consider coming. And, uh, i- i- it's a great organization. Uh, we figured out the last decade that this club has donated something like $75,000 just in the last decade to the community, most of it to the youth. And, uh, we enjoy what we do and we appreciate your recognition.
Great. Any of the rest of you like to say anything? He called you geezers. Might want to defend yourselves.
He meant to say athlete.
Well, I guess it's on your perspective, isn't it, Commissioner Bell?
I'm with you. I'm standing right next to you on that. We've got these fine athletes right here in front of us. No, it's been great. I've got to know John and Mr. Fawson a little bit over the years. And, uh, we appreciate what you do out there. You know, you look at, you go to these organizations and I'm involved with a lot of things. And I was up at, um, Winter Trails Days on, um, Saturday. And there was hundreds and hundreds of people up there and it's all the volunteers. We don't have county employees up there doing it. We have volunteers that make that happen. They run the snow blower. He's a, an emergency room doctor in Ogden and he runs the snow groomer, um, once a week's his time when he gets to go out and do that. And so the volunteerism is what makes this great because the government will never have enough money to do everything we all want. We just, we just don't. Now, there's some people think that maybe we should, but I don't think that that's the right way. And as you get involved and I appreciate your volunteerism and all these organizations that do that, it's been a great thing in the county. And we really appreciate it. And for your great city, you guys got a great city in North Ogden, so thank you.
Mr. Ebert?
I will keep you up there. I just want to say thank you also. I, I think the powerful thing you're doing is, uh, empowering youth to be successful in life and showing them that somebody cares about them. Um, and, and that changes lives. And I can, something that Commissioner Bell said, um, excuse me, Commissioner Gibson said was that you're working with our veterans and I cannot say thank you enough. You know, my grandfather was a veteran and, and there's a need there. We forget about them sometimes. So just thank you for everything you do. 70 years, that's a long time. Appreciate it.
Hope to see you March 15th.
I wrote it down.
We'll be there. Before you go, let us present you with this. Come on up here and we'll present you with this. Maybe snap a photo.
Who wants to hold it?
The ranking official.
If you want, we can place.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi. Okay.
Some good examples of the tremendous satisfaction that can come from service. Appreciate each and every one of you. All right, we'll move along then with our action items. Item number, oh, you know what? We probably ought to vote on that, huh? We never did vote on that. So we need a motion to adopt and approve.
So we use a number on resolutions?
And ordinances.
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution number one. The Weber County Commissioners and the North Ogden Kiwanis Club for 70 years of service.
Second. Okay, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. It's unanimous. So I hope these guys know that they're resolution number one for the rest of their lives. That's pretty cool. Love 2016. All right, item number two, request for approval of a final reading of an ordinance of Weber County amending certain provisions of the purchasing code. Brianna, welcome. Good to see you.
Hello again.
Hello. We, did we see you last week?
Yep.
Oh, we did.
I said we put it off for a week and make her come back again.
I'm a little busy with everything going on this week. No, so this is just like you said, the final reading for our ordinance, hopefully to help it make a little more efficient. Um, just a reiteration, we are increasing the purchase order limit from $5,000 to $20,000, allowing us, us in the purchasing department to release purchase orders up to $20,000 and have you ratify them in the commission meeting instead of holding on to them and putting off our orders.
Makes sense. It's time. Okay, any other questions for Brianna?
All ordinance number one. I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number one, um, that amends certain provisions in the purchasing code.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second before us then. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. The motion passes. It's unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Item number three, Lieutenant Toll we have with us today. If he'll come on up to the microphone. Has a request for approval of a cooperative agreement by and between Weber County and the Utah Division of Emergency Management to establish a public insurance agency mutual for the purpose of administering the Utah Search and Rescue. Good to see you, Brandon. Sometimes I wonder, I know you guys work hard when it's time, but see you up there on those snowmobiles. It looks fun.
That can be hard work too. Depending on how many times you get stuck.
That's true.
Go ahead, go ahead. Tell us how hard of work that is.
All right, Athlete Bell.
Thank you. Thank you. You, that's the way it should be.
See?
There we go.
One person.
If you understand.
So this, uh, the Search and Rescue Card Program, um, was established last year, um, enacted by House Bill 324. Uh, what this card program is, uh, individual or individuals can purchase the Search and Rescue Card. That money goes into a, uh, Search and Rescue Fund. And therefore, if there's a county that charges for a rescue, these folks would be exempt from that, uh, that charge unless of course their rescue was, uh, caused by them being reckless. Uh, this fund also is separate from the, uh, Search and Rescue, uh, Assistance Program. So if an individual does have a card, we end up rescuing them. Uh, we can actually reimburse through this program for that individual. Uh, this is not an insurance program. It's more of an assurance for these folks, uh, not to be charged for rescue if, uh, it was, uh, like I said, not done recklessly.
How much does a card cost?
You know, they haven't determined that yet. They're still working on it.
Will you renew it every year or is it a lifetime card?
It is an annual card.
Then that money will go into a fund and they'll use it for, to search and rescue and reimbursement and that?
Correct. Yes.
Who do they purchase the card through? Is it a state entity?
You know, uh, they're still kind of, the committee's still working on that, but I know it's going to be, uh, throughout the outdoor retailers and things like that, that they may be able to purchase the card from.
Is there a cost to the county by entering into an agreement with the Emergency Management from the state?
No cost at all.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the cooperative agreement by and between Weber County, Utah Division of Emergency Management to establish a public insurance agency mutual.
Thank you.
Second, uh, question? Yeah, go ahead. Dave, have you looked at this to make sure we're all square and we're comfortable with entering to an agreement with that?
I have not, but I looked at it. Reed reviewed this one for the county.
Okay, second. Reed's okay. Reed is great, actually.
Yes, he is.
Okay, all right. Motion is second then on the floor then. Just be, just be a contract, right? So we won't have a number on it with the new system. All right, uh, discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. And all teasing aside, when we need you, we're awful glad you know how to do all that stuff. So thank you. We're very grateful.
You bet. Thank you.
I'm not putting the teasing aside. Thanks, Brandon.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brandon. Lieutenant. Item number four, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Sue Barker or Traders Row for operation of Traders Row at Fort Benaventura in 2016. Jim?
How are you?
Jim?
Good seeing you guys. How are you? Did any?
Great.
Good. Yeah, this is a contract between, uh, Weber County and Sue Barker, which runs a Traders Row down at Fort Benaventura every Saturday from 10 to 4 down there. So, uh, it's a pretty standard contract.
Great. This is one that we've had, uh, for many years and it looks like it's similar in nature to what we've seen in years past.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions, comments on this one?
Sue does a great job with that.
She does a very good job.
She is involved and just really, this is an all win for the county having her out there.
Absolutely. She's, uh, now helping me out with school groups down there for, uh,
Oh, great.
Down there for the, we have our school groups down there and she's been very helpful.
Good. Cause she recently retired not too long ago and
Last year.
And so that's great. I, that's a, she's a good, good fit for you.
She comes in full dress and
Oh, yeah.
She's, um, she does it for the love of the, of the fort, so.
Yep, she does. Thank her. Thank her. Tell her we appreciate what she's doing there.
I'll make a motion that we approve contract by and between Sue Barker, Trader Row for the operations of Traders Row at Fort Benaventura in 2016 in Weber County.
My second.
Okay, motion is second then to approve this contract. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. It's unanimous. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Take care.
Thanks, Jim. The park was looking good, by the way, Saturday up there at North Fork. That parking lot we added was phenomenal.
Good.
Now, they didn't know how to park in that parking lot, which we're going to help them next year so we can use the whole parking lot. But it was great. And the volunteers in the snow, they said it was more snow they've ever seen on Winter Trails Day.
It was, I don't understand. There was about 500 people up there.
Yeah, it was people everywhere, riding bikes, snow shoeing and the whole bit. It was just great.
Yeah, maybe we had to, uh, move that parking lot a little bigger next year.
Yes, or just teach people how to park. If we show them how to park, we'll be fine. So appreciate what you're doing. And that's a great park and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. All right, Mr. Harvey. Next, we have the request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Salzburger Echo for professional music entertainment at the 2016 Sneden Hof German Winter Fest. This is one we look forward to every year, Jim.
This is a great one. This is a great one. Takes place a week from Friday and Saturday. This, uh, this contract and the next one are the two last pieces of the puzzle for entertainment. Salzburger Echo. I'll point out to 30 years ago, Salzburger Echo for the first time played together as a group at this Hof German Fest. And since then, uh, members have retired or come and gone. But this year, all of the original members from 30 years ago will be here to play in Salzburger Echo for their last performance forever. These are the guys with the alp horns and everything else. They're going to break off and do different things. Mostly, uh, spend a lot of time in the Caribbean, I, I've been told. So I know that there's some Dutch influence there, but I don't know very much German influence. And so I don't know if they're trading in their, their Lederhosen for something else, but, uh, no kidding. We've really enjoyed having them here though. They've been a great, a great group. So I wanted to point that out. That's certainly a very newsworthy story for any astute reporter who would pick up on that, uh, but we're looking for approval of this entertainment contract, Commissioners.
So, um, you guys didn't understand the word klumpen that I just used, but that's the Dutch word for their wooden shoes.
Oh, I thought it was Bet Speedo, because they're going to the Caribbean, but it didn't. Okay, I'm, thank you, Commissioner, for helping us out there.
So I'm wondering, they always come over here. When do we go to Hof?
Uh, I've actually got four sound bites from them with an official invitation that'll be played during this, this ceremony and
I guess all my phone calls worked.
Yeah. Yeah, they, something's worked, but they, they, they've invited us over, uh, so this year, next year, the year after that, we're welcome any year. And they'd like us to come over during their celebration. I have one from Harold Victor, Fix, Fix, Fixer?
Oh, yeah, Harold.
Harold.
Mr. Vickers.
He was here last year and then also Rayner, Rayner Kraus, who's their P, Public Information Officer. Uh, they've both, uh, extended gratitude and thanks and also an invitation to come on over, so.
I'm telling you, the Christmas time in Germany and in that part of Europe is just amazing. I had the opportunity to spend the whole month there, uh, a few years ago, several years ago. And, uh, it was just absolutely outstanding. It's something you'd never forget.
I'd love to experience that in this lifetime.
I, I spent a couple of years in, in Holland and the land of the, the wooden shoes. And it's a very similar experience there. It's just an awful lot of fun.
Wonderful.
We're, we're glad for these cultural experiences. They're a, a big deal for our community and mean an awful lot to what we're doing out there. Um, why don't you tell us about the second one as well while we're here and we'll take those two together. Contract between, uh, the Weber, uh, the Alpiners USA for the professional entertainment.
Another group that has played, uh, frequently amongst the Pacific Northwest in German festivals up and down that area. They've never been to Utah, which is another, uh, first for this show. We bring in frequently a lot of bands that don't play at the Snowbirds that are the other German festivals in the state of Utah. They're the first timers here and, and in searching for this group, I attended, uh, uh, the, the six week long German festival down in Orange County that draws all of LA and Southern California down in there. That's, they have the population base, obviously, to do that. And I'll tell you, I've been told by the Consul General, uh, for Germany that ours is probably one of the better, if not the best, authentic German festival in the United States. And if that six week long festival is any indication, we, we do a great job here in Weber County. We, of course, we only have the population to support a couple of days, but our music is just as good. Our entertainment, uh, uh, the, the food is better. Yeah, it's just, and we're just without all that, uh, other, uh, inner, that interruption. It's just a really good, solid, uh, festival. So this is a group that, that more or less came out of that little trip down there. Uh, they're from Northern California and will be flying in. We're hosting them at our local hotels and, and, uh, they're shipping some of their accordions and stuff, uh, here in the next week. And first time here. There was a little language that through the attorney's office, we were able to get changed. But, uh, this is another entertainment contract for, be a first, it'll be a good one for us. And so we're looking for approval of this one as well.
Great. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve contracts by and between Weber County and the Salzburger Echo for professional musical entertainment and by and between Weber County and the Alpiners USA for professional musical entertainment for the 2016 Sneden Hof German Winter Fest.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thanks, Jimmy.
Mr. Harvey? Great facility over there. We're proud of it and the way it's run. All right, uh, item number seven. All right, uh, item number seven, request for approval of contract by and between Weber County and Cap Construction and Development for the forty fifty West Sewer Project. Dana, good to see you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, this is a, a very short stretch of sewer line that we need to get installed before our road, uh, gets constructed on top of it. Uh, we solicited for bids and received four back. Uh, the lowest responsible bid was Cap Construction. Um, they're a really good contractor and they're ready to get started in the next few weeks.
Great. I appreciate that you said. Lowest responsible bid.
Well, we, we did have to disqualify one due to a, a non-current license.
We're looking at ability and quality also.
Yes.
And I'm always happy to see local companies bidding on these projects and doing well in the process, so. That always makes me happy. So, okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion, we approve a contract by and between Weber County and Cap Construction and Development Company for the forty fifty West Sewer Project.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Wow, that was easy.
Thank you.
Well done, Dana, thank you. And last but not least, request for approval of sponsorship agreement by and between Weber County and Weber State University Small Business Development Center to sponsor the leadership training program. Douglas, good to see you.
Commissioners, good morning.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure. I've taken Mr. Harvey's place as last.
Yeah, what did you do to Shelley?
So I'm not sure.
It was last.
We'll have to deal with that.
Let's continue moving ahead.
Yeah, so thank you for your time, uh, and the consideration of this one-year sponsorship agreement between Weber County and Weber State University and the Small Business Development Center. This is actually a, a great thing, uh, that falls under our economic development umbrella directly. Um, you know, although we're titling as a sponsorship, sponsorship agreement, this is really, in my opinion, an investment in small business and entrepreneurism. So Weber State University is launching a leadership development training program for small businesses. Um, among its many educational offerings, Weber State University provides customized counseling and training to a wide variety of entrepreneurs and small businesses each year through its degree and certificate programs and the Small Business Development Center. Often, small businesses, small business owners have little to no experience starting or running a business and Weber State University alongside its community partners has filled an important gap in the economy by assisting prospective or current business owners obtain the knowledge and direction they need to launch and manage their ventures. In an effort to bolster small business success in Weber and Davis Counties, Weber State University is aligning stra, strategic partners to provide sponsorship funding to establish this new leadership development program targeting entrepreneurs and small businesses. This training will further develop the critical skills needed to lead more effectively, work smarter and, uh, of significant value, grow business. Um, according to the Small Business Administration, only fifty percent of businesses survive for the first five years and that's been a, a metric that's been around for a long time. When small businesses account, uh, for up to sixty-four percent of all net new private sector jobs and ninety-nine percent of employer firms in the US, their success has a significant impact on the economy, not just, uh, locally, but nationally. So Mr. Brandon Stoddard, uh, the director of our Small Business Development Center is here, uh, and he'll, if it's okay, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like him to offer a few comments on this leadership development.
Great.
Opportunity.
Why not, Brandon? Welcome.
Thank you very much for allowing me to participate. So we work with roughly three, a little more than three hundred, uh, small businesses a year. And, uh, what I really want to accomplish with this is really hit at the heart of what it means to be a small business owner and that starts with leadership and then how to organize yourself and let's teach you how to sell and market yourself and then go further. Too often we have folks come in and say, I need help in this small area while the rest of their business is struggling, so I thought, let's start at the core and then build on top of that, if that makes sense. So, uh, we, we work, we spent thirteen hundred hours last year with entrepreneurs and small businesses just in the Weber County building or in the, the Weber County area. And you'll see those similar numbers across the state of Utah. So this is a, really an effort to, to reach more people, to reach more small businesses and make a greater impact with what we're doing.
Great. And Brandon, I know that this is going backwards a little bit, but before we ask questions, will you state your last name for the record for, I, I know that Fatima's going to need that and, and what your role is.
Yeah, Brandon Stoddard with the Small Business Development Center and the director of our office.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Brandon? Comments?
Yes, this is great. That's where, what makes this economy move is these small businesses and anything we can do to help that, we want to help.
Terrific. So very excited. We're in the process of putting together, um, economic and community development, um, business model construct. We've met with several different groups and one of the issues that came up is a very robust small business and entrepreneur program. Uh, so the only suggestion I have is marketing, being able to get it out to this community. We can, we'll help you with that. I'm sure you've already read, reached out to Chuck Lynn Hart from the Chamber. Um, this is exactly moving forward what we need and, and that's why Doug and the county have been such a big proponent of this. So whatever we can do to continue to help you, um, please reach out to us and we're excited to have you onboard.
Thank you.
I should say Mr. Larson, not Doug. And I think partnership becomes the key word there, of course.
Absolutely is.
The name of our, of our entire division there with the, the Economic Development Partnership, because what we've learned is that we can't, you know, we can't do this on our own.